A special good morning to Katie Warren, who's joined us today.
Dr. Braggy, point of where we have to vote on the approval.
Oh, go right ahead, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Great, so welcome to our meeting today and to the public who is at home. And we're gonna kick off the last remaining slides that are from our cabinet members for our strategic plan. And we will begin with Dr. Horvath.
Thank you, Dr. Braggy, board members. Because we are continuing on from last week, we had all of our schools present. It's interesting now that we talk about essentially the support we provide to sites. So with our certificated classified employee plan, I will also, it's interesting, we talk a lot about the, our agreements with our labor partners. And Katie is here, Katie is taking over as the VHEA president, so we welcome her. Looking forward to working with her, that's why I'm sitting right next to her. She's nice and close to me, but welcome, thank you for being here. There it is. Okay, we had four big projects that we're looking at, recruiting, hiring, and onboarding. Also collective bargaining, collective bargaining and the calendar, and training this year in our goal section. We'll transition to LACO best. We have made that transition, so we have, yes, we are complete with that piece. This is an ongoing transition to LACO's best. We're finding new and interesting things with this program. But I'm proud to say that the HR, personnel services, and business services are working closely together. We've not had as many hiccups as many districts have, which is nice, I think partly due to our size. But also just all hands on with our, both of our departments working on this piece. Collective bargaining, we have four units that we hoped by the end of the school year that we would have agreements with all four units. I'm proud and happy to say that we have agreements with three of the four. And we're very, very close with the instructional assistance, but we'll be bringing forward the third of four at this next meeting, next Tuesday, for agreement with OTBS. So we'll be digging in with the IAs ongoing, hopefully before the end of this fiscal year, which ends June 30th. Last time we did this, we signed with the last of four on June 30th, actually, so we were able to meet that goal. So we hope to do that again this year. The other part was the calendar, as you know, we have a three-year calendar agreement. One of the things, and this may be news to Katie, is that we talked about making it evergreen, where we're essentially always three years out. So we don't get to a place where we're at the end of our agreement with calendar. So essentially what we would do is we would rally the calendar committee, starting next year, to be thinking about the third year out again. And we want to always stay three years out. We feel pretty strongly right now, and obviously the board will dictate this, but we feel strongly about the calendar we have now. But as you know, there are always little things that come up that, you know, we may need to change. But we will be giving board direction for that three-year out and be working with our calendar committee to make sure that we stay on track. The other huge piece is the training, obviously around evaluation, right? We want all of our, we are changing and kind of transitioning over to the Danielson model. All of our teachers have gotten initial training, all of our administrators have gotten initial training. Our administrators got some additional training from Dr. Seaman and Dr. Michael Sherman last week at our retreat. And we will continue to do that training with teachers that will be on cycle for this year, so we're really, really excited. A lot of our goals in personnel services will be around that piece. So this is, you saw this earlier, Dr. Braggy presented this. We have some of the agreements that we made, again, we're close. We recently signed this agreement, we're close with the instructional assistance. Again, we hope to get that done in this fiscal year. Danielson framework, what you're gonna see this year in this area as far as goals, at least one of the areas, one of the things that we'll be looking at is just continuing this timeline. With any new system, there are growing pains. So while we are still tracking and on time with our training pieces, we'll continue that into July and August. As teachers that will be on cycle will be going through more training. Dustin and Dr. Seaman's group will be doing some training in August for all teachers. But specifically teachers that are on cycle will start digging into the frontline system, which is kind of the back end of things. The important piece, as we talked about last week, is Danielson and really using that as our guide for good teaching and learning. But we will be digging into frontline, which is the platform that we will deliver this evaluation system on. The beauty of that is we will have data for board members moving forward. Who's on cycle, where people are at on cycle, where principals are, making sure we're holding each other accountable moving forward in that system. So our goals, you will see, will be looking at timelines for when we're looking at our progress monitoring for our evaluation system. Yes, sir?
In addition, we are working collaboratively on utilizing the framework for our administrators as well.
That's right. So a lot going on, a lot with evaluation. It's not simply, I think what happens with evaluations over time, when you use evaluations, is they kind of get shoved, the focus starts lacking a bit at some point in time. Because we had three or four different evaluation systems, it really started lacking because people started circumventing the process and it became really convoluted. That's part of why we came to the board and saying we really wanted to focus on one. Our labor partners agreed and our committee agreed that we wanted one system. So we're gonna have that one system moving forward, which will be Danielson. And people will be on different cycles, which is the way we've done this. So what we'll do is we'll be coming to the board through the transition plan, or through our strategic plan, to talk about data, updates, where we're at, and how we're impacting change in our classrooms with our students ultimately. Yes?
Is this, good morning.
Good morning.
Is the September date at the end, September 2024 or 2025?
Oh, that is a typo, I apologize. So it's September 2024.
No, it's September, June 25.
Oh, am I right?
Yeah, but I mean, what's the start date? It's this, 24, right? Just confirming, thank you.
24.
So it's an ongoing, what we'll talk about, you'll look at, this is a cycle. So year in, year out, we will be able to bring back the same data as a cycle to the board to update you.
Thank you.
Where we're at, who's completing, where people are being graded. And then I will turn it to facilities.
Welcome.
Can I, sorry, I have a quick question about training, onboarding.
Yes.
Since some of us have recognized some of the difficulties with the substitute teachers. So that may not be a formal evaluation, especially if these are like a one-off. But can you enlighten me on any practices or rubrics or anything you're gonna move forward with so that we can feel a little more comfortable with some of the substitutes that are arriving on campus?
Yeah, so we have, I've done some, a lot of research around what we do for our substitutes and what's out there. I've found some colleagues that are using a, an organization that really looking into, that does extensive training. At this point in time, our capacity, as you know, we are very limited. We're hiring and doing all of this with everybody, so we're always looking, what models are out there that really help with substitutes? And I'm finding Bernando Beach and some other districts are using an organization that's, they're super, super jazzed about it. Their current superintendent, Nikki Wesley, was a former HR person as well, and she raved, and I really respect her. She raves about this organization, so I'm looking into that. I would anticipate the board seeing a contract coming through with us to...
So it's like a third party, the trainee number?
That's right, they have updated, so they do hands-on, so face-to-face. They also do an onboarding system where you can just go online, it's interactive as well.
Right, great.
Because it builds, it's, we don't internally have the capacity to, because we're constantly onboarding and hiring them. So this third party, I'm not always big on third parties, but again, highly successful at this point in time, so the board should see that coming. We also have our own internal piece where we talk about safety plans, things like that. So our own internal, but then there's that external that really talks about what does a good substitute teacher do? What does it look like? And if something happens on that day, how do you respond? So those are some of the internal things we do as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. All right.
Morning, everybody, we thank you for the time. Our goals of excellence revolve around these four elements, our five-year deferred maintenance plan, work order requests, system, principal surveys, and fit reports.
Excuse me, Mr. Haas, can you speak louder?
Yes.
When you speak to there, I can't hear you, please.
Yes. So our five-year deferred maintenance plan is still in process. We've, it's, the five-year deferred maintenance plans are always very fluid, depending on what's going on on the ground. So currently, we've had some benefit from our calc shape program. Because of that grant that we got, we were able to complete a considerable amount of work that was initially on the first year or one of our years for the deferred maintenance plan. And we're also awaiting word on whether we're gonna be granted the additional couple, $2.3 million that we're eligible for on the secondary part of it. So it's still in process of being created. The first three years are completed, working on the fourth and fifth year still. But some of that's gonna change considerably based on what we get as far as the grant program. We have been successful in completing all of the last five years, we're in our final year of our deferred maintenance plan at this point, and have done really well on those projects and have been able to do considerably more than was on the initial plan and deal with some issues that came up, you know, during the school year, the last couple of years as well. So that's in progress, and I expect once, you know, in the next couple of months, once we get the information on whether we're gonna get the grant, that's gonna kind of indicate or dictate how the deferred maintenance plan sort of solidifies moving forward. With regard to our work order requests, we've introduced the system and been consistent with it for the last year or so to try to improve our work order response time. We need regularly with our staff to make sure that they're addressing issues and that they have everything they need to keep us on track with dealing with issues that come up in a timely manner. And so we're always, you know, that's, we're always working on improving that process, and I feel it's going well. With regard to the principal surveys, those are going out every month. Now that it's summertime, things are gonna be a little bit different for the next couple of months. But that does help us communicate with the sites to see what they're feeling with regard to our service. The only real deficiencies, I don't even wanna really call them major deficiencies, but communication is really key to that process so that we know what's going on from their perspective with regard to how we service the customers. With regard to the fit reports, we've really done well with the fit reports. We've advanced to the exemplary status for two of our four schools. We're just, just very close on the other two schools. This year, there'll be a little bit of a change because we won't be analyzing Hawthorne the way we've been because it's not gonna be as active on the school site, we'll be transitioning to Elrodale. Our inspector will also be different this year. I did that on purpose because I don't want there to be a sense of complacency and people getting used to the sites and seeing the same things all the time. So it's good to lay fresh eyes on that process. And as far as the action plan and how we deal with fit findings, this last year's findings were really great. And it's hard to improve when you're, you know, so close to being in really good shape throughout the district. But what we do now is, I've got fit reports coming up at the end of June and early July for this year for the sites. And we're in the process now of doing pre-site inspections now, so we're basically taking the fit reports from last year, making sure we're going through the sites to address any issues that were called out so that we can minimize any kind of reporting that they might find on this year. So that's how we're trying to kind of keep in that level of excellence and stay there. That's it for us.
And just one more thing that we wanted to add, pertaining to the five-year deferred maintenance plan. I just wanted to take the time to thank the board for allowing us to move forward with the facilities master plan. And Will's gonna touch on that in the next slide, but I wanted to just let you know that that plan does impact our future construction, but it also impacts our five-year deferred maintenance plan. So some of the items that the board will see eventually when this plan is redrafted will be impacted by the facilities master plan, which essentially they'll look at all of our facilities, they'll see where we're at, what needs to be done immediately. Some of that may fall under deferred maintenance, some of it may fall under new construction. So that's a really exciting thing, so that's also gonna be part of that five-year deferred maintenance plan in our future strategic plan goals.
And just so for, like next Tuesday, you'll see the LCAP. And so remember, we take our strategic plan and we're able to put it into the format of the LCAP. You'll see that in our third goal, it is still the five-year deferred maintenance plan, which we'll maintain. But I'll start to introduce the language around the facilities master plan because we don't have that completed yet in the survey. Obviously, it's a process. So over the next year, if not the second year, the deferred maintenance plan will roll out of that goal and it'll be the, what will be created or offered or approved of the facilities master plan. Does that make sense? So it's a change in words.
Yes, but are you in receipt of the facilities master plan? Because I don't know if we've seen it yet.
No.
We're in the process of that, so it's a, it's a pretty, it's not a very long process, but it is a very involved process.
So right now, we're at the point of having the principals surveyed and just different administrators surveyed to see where we are with our sites. But I think that's part of Will's slide, so I'll let him get to that.
I still have my phone.
I, I, thank you, thank you for that.
On the facilities master plan, no, on the, on the five-year plan. So right now, the 25-year basically will end in June of next year at the first, that, if the, if the plan starts in '25, '26, '27, or '24, will you add one year at the other end, or will you wait till the five years are up and then do another facility master plan? How are you handling, because something may come up and you wanted to have another year added on, and then you moved the first year because you accomplished whatever you needed to do. How do you plan to do that?
Yes, that's absolutely, that's correct. So every year, we'll, we make updates, we add a year to the five-year plan. Basically, that five-year deferred maintenance plan, what it really is in essence, is allowing the board to see what major expenses are coming up with deferred maintenance. But for example, let's say something happens on one of our sites, well, you know, and it's a major thing, and we have to get it replaced immediately. We're not gonna say, well, it's in the fourth year of our plan, so tough luck. You know, so what we do is we update it throughout time, and every year, we're adding another year. But this facilities master plan will help us to look at it in a much deeper breadth of knowledge of where we're at, at our sites. And then from there, we continue to develop year after year.
Don't worry, it's an ongoing plan, it keeps going.
But it goes five years out because...
Five years, yeah.
Sometimes you need to really plan for something, and we may need to save some money for some bigger items. So right now, the board's contributing about 843,000, around there, 843,000, somewhere around there, $840-something thousand per year is what we're contributing to deferred maintenance, and so every year, that's going towards that five-year plan.
And I read in the, the school news that I got recently, or I don't remember where, what, about a federal facilities grant for modernization. Are we involved in any, getting any of those funds on that, on that federal?
We are actively, through the services of, the names...
HPE.
HPE, what's Hancock?
Park and Delong.
Park and Delong. Through their services, they actively put in applications for us, so we are exploring all of those modernization grant funds. They take, as I said before, like, they take about two to five years at the max side for us to see those funds. But we do have some applications going in actually, that have gone in already, and so they're actively working on those for us.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Ken, and good morning, everyone. And thank you for the segue to the facilities master plan, Ken and Raphael. So I'll touch on that first goal area, the facilities master plan, we are in the process of getting that document created. So what we have happening right now is we sent out a survey to our leadership team, assistant principals and principals. They have all promised me they'll give me their responses by June 15th, which is coming up.
It's extremely thorough and it takes a very long time.
Yeah. But it's good. It is, that's the whole point, it's thorough. We're thinking about the future, what the future needs of each one of our schools will be. As you know, we've selected Canada Design as our facilities master planning architect. They are going to be conducting, on top of the survey and review and the survey results, they'll be conducting visits to each one of our schools and doing an assessment of each campus to incorporate that into our plan. And basically, they'll determine what our needs are based on that, and that'll tie into Ken's five-year plan as well. And then after that, what our goal is right now is to have a draft report ready for the board and presented to the board in October. And so to touch on some of my other goals, Elrodale Elementary School, we wanted to develop our transition team, which I think we successfully did. Sarah mentioned in our previous strategic plan presentation, all the steps that we've taken. We've, we have, are completing our move this week. And in about a month from now, Ken and his moving services team will start moving our pods over to Elrodale and start unpacking the boxes mid-July. Our future projects at the high school, our goal was to create, start up, and bid out and award these future projects. So far, you know, as you know, the upper athletic field, we have awarded that project to Erickson Hall. That was back in February, and they'll, they're in the pre-construction phase and bidding phase right now. Our, the New Conheim, we awarded that to Swinerton this past May. They're in the pre-construction phase as well, they're doing, they're reviewing the design, coming up with constructability items that may help us save additional funds, and they'll be bidding that out in the next few months, and we'll have a GMP for that pretty soon with our expected completion of the, in summer of 2026. Southside Athletic Field and the parking lot, we expect the design to be approved by the end of this year and start construction next summer. And finally, we'll be having a grand line update coming pretty soon. We're very close to figuring out how we're gonna handle that project, and we hope to be presenting that to the board shortly. And our final goal is to increase our social media outreach, well, actually to create it at the beginning of the strategic plan. And now we're just increasing it. With the help of the Starkins, we've been able to issue social media posts. We're putting monthly construction updates on our website. We've had town halls in the past, and so we believe we met that goal for our excellence. I think that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I want to start off by saying thank you to all of you, all of the leadership team, principals, and department directors for your collaboration this year. We've had a great year. We had about six goals, and I'm happy to report that we've met them all this year. Starting with our business services procedure manual, we have now a final draft of the manual. It took us about the entire year to put it together because it was a collaboration with everyone in the fiscal services department team and at the sites. We sort of looked at all the needs that came up, and we wanted to find the best way to support our principals, our office staff, anyone that works with us in the department. And so the business services manual has now procedures and frequently asked questions so that anyone will be able to access an answer that they need of how to correctly submit something or any questions. And hopefully, in the years to come, we can continue to update in a way that we can support our sites and departments. We also worked on establishing industry standard procedures. We have done that and also incorporated that with our business services manual. We wanted to make sure that we're all sort of following the current processes and procedures to make sure that we don't really have audit findings and that we're all doing the correct thing. And so we had to put some systems in place, and I think it's been going very well for us this year. Financial reporting, we just presented the estimated actuals for fiscal year '23, '24, and proposed the adopted budget at the June 4th meeting. And we will hopefully have that board approval at the next board meeting. In that, I want to thank again all the sites and departments we've been meeting consistently. And so I think that it's brought a lot of understanding of the budget to the school sites. And so with that collaboration, I think everyone sort of has more of an input with what's going on at their sites and an understanding. And we've been able to collaborate, and so if there's a need for something, we've been doing our best in the fiscal services department to provide that for everyone. So with the quarterly site survey, we sent out a survey to our leadership team, and that's where we had a lot of input of how we can improve our services. One of the items that came up was like understanding our account strings, what everything means. And so at the last budget meetings that we had, we were able to share a chart of accounts so that everyone at the site sort of has an understanding of what each account string means, not just random numbers, but you understand like, okay, I'm gonna use this for materials and supplies, for certificated extra duty hours. And so I think that having an understanding of what everything means just brings clarity and transparency to all of us working together. Our audit report, we had a great audit this year, and we will start our interim audit for this, this school year, the week of June 24th. So that's coming up. And like Dr. Horvath said, we had the best HCM implementation where we have trained our staff at the sites. We've done some updates to our timesheets so that it fits with this new system that we have. But overall, I think we've been doing a great job, have great feedback, and have been able to give that accessibility to all of our employees to, at any point, pull up their W-2s or their weekly pay stubs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you, everybody. Again, I'd like to thank the departments as well, we've all worked together really well this year, and it's been really helpful. Food services. My areas, the first two, I wanted to implement a program called Project School Nutrition. So as I said before, we were, we were doing everything like paper. And now we're transitioning over, it's not, it's, we're still in progress because we had to get every, all the menus and everything inside of a system. And so now, this summer, we're working on going online and starting to use electronic process. So there'll be less paperwork and everything should be online, and it'll be a lot easier. And so it takes training, so we're gonna train the staff, and they're, they're learning how to use the computers, and so that's what we're doing right now. And then the second one was train staff and approve recipes. I just said it was still in progress because it's always gonna be in progress. We're never gonna, we're never gonna be done. Like today, we made a new salad shaker for summer school, so it's like, it's like the one you saw in McDonald's many, many years ago, but it was, it was cute and it, and it fit into our little sack lunch. And so, but again, it's just little improvements, we're constantly changing, we're constantly making new ideas. My cook wants to start juicing, so I, I, I might, we might try it. I know that's been something that the wellness committee was looking into. We made some sort of a celery juice, and it tasted pretty good. So hopefully, that's something we can introduce. You know, we gotta try all these new things. And again, that's, that's why I say, we're always, we're always trying to improve, we're always trying, and that, that's always gonna be in progress. Kit funds, I said, yes, we've done it, but we still are spending more money. So for instance, right now, I work with Ken, and we have gotten the high school serving area starting to get painted, and so Rebecca helped us too. So it's, it's turning out really beautiful. And a much needed update in our kitchen area, like the walls need to be repainted and, like, everything needs to be cleaned. And we're, and we're using some of those funds to help do that. And it's, it's really gonna bring a better vibe to the kitchen and the high school when the kids come in. The wellness committee, we met October 30th of this year. Juicing was one of the ideas that was brought up. We also discussed menus, and so it's pretty, you know, again, food services is constantly expanding, constantly changing, constantly trying new stuff. And so, this is, this is it.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Kitchen infrastructure and training funds.
Kitchen infrastructure and training.
So that's what we...
Those are special funds that come from the state. The state issues it.
Those are special funds that come from the state. The state issues it like periodically. They did it two years in a row, 22, '23, and so now we receive those funds. But they are targeted funds specifically for either infrastructure of your kitchens, remodeling the kitchen, which we are doing along with Ken's team. If you go over to the cafeteria right now, it's looking a lot, it's going to look really nice. And then you have the training component as well that's part of that, those kit funds. So we're, we have to, it's use it or lose it. So we have to spend it or else we've got to return it. So of course, we're going to spend it.
And we also, we also purchased equipment at the middle school too, a tilt skillet and a combi oven. So we're going to, those are, a combi oven is a new oven. It's really cool. It does steaming and it does, it does like air frying. It's really, it's really cool. But we're going to practice with it at BV. If we really like it, then we're going to get one at the high school.
Question. With all this going on with the governor's budget, do you see the funds for the lunches going away anytime soon? Because I keep reading how.
So we have not heard that those monies are going away. I, I would be very, very, very surprised if they did. It's just something that districts are not relying on.
Yeah.
And so it would be a very difficult thing to pull back, especially because it's a bigger, it's part of a bigger approach from the governor in regards to meals for, for kids. And so that would be, it would be very surprising if that does happen.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Any other questions? Yes.
I just want to ask a question about the kosher lunches, how.
How's it going?
The kosher lunches and the, how that's going in terms of the, do they like them? I mean, the leftovers and so on.
Well, initially, we had some struggles in regards to the ordering process. But I think for the most part, initially, that was a problem as far as like people ordering or not ordering and people expecting meals and they, you know, for whatever reason, they didn't place the order. But I thank Heather and her team because we've been able to iron all of that out through Heather's leadership and she's making sure everyone is accounted for. So we've made a lot of progress there. And I hear good things about the meals. If you want to talk about that.
Yeah, we have about 200 students participating district-wide. And that's kind of what was expected because at first it was like 350, but any, with anything, anytime you introduce something, you're going to have like a big influx. Once children get used to it, they're going to, they're going to, they're going to like, the ones that really like it will get it and the ones that don't really like it will get something different. I see some kids get kosher one day and the next day they get our food. They kind of, you know, depending on what they like. And then, and again, like, like not everybody likes the kebab, but a lot of kids do. Not everybody likes the pasta, but, but most of them do. You know what I mean? So it's like, you, you can't please everybody, but you can try to, you know, do a variety where they can choose something that they like.
And we're constantly giving that feedback to our kosher vendor. And actually, we did go through an RFP process this year for the kosher meals and we kept the same vendor. They're doing a pretty, a pretty great job. And I think that the price point is, is a little difficult for us because the margin is very small. And of course, we have overhead costs associated with being able to provide kosher meals, but nonetheless, you know, we're, we're still managing that. But it definitely, the feedback we've gotten so far is pretty positive. So we're really happy to continue that program into next year. And yeah.
So just also because I, hi Heather, you had mentioned in one of our wellness meetings, maybe trying to onboard like a faux or something like that.
I'm still trying.
For vegetarian kids and so on. Yeah.
I'm still trying to. And what happened was is I had some equipment that I had ordered and it, it's actually taking longer than I expected. So once that equipment gets in, I think it's about mid-October at this point, I ordered it back in February, then I can do it.
Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks for trying it out.
And we, by the way, if you ever want to go taste our lunch, we, you know, we, we have the Chipotle, we have a better, a better line than Chipotle. You know, we actually, we, we don't do the little half a scoop, you know.
I've heard about the, I've heard about the baked potatoes.
Oh, the baked potato bar is amazing. Yeah.
So feel free. It's almost lunchtime.
Thank you. And I have one more thing to say. I'll just close it with this. A senior came up to me in the last few weeks of school and he's like, hey, you know, I just want to thank you and your team. Like you guys have done an amazing job. I've been here at Beverly for four years and I can't remember his exact words, but pretty much he was thanking me. He was thanking the kosher program and he was, he was just, he was very, he's like, I don't think many schools get this kind of service.
Yeah.
I was happy about that. Made my day.
That's great.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So the next one is wide recognition.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, where's the clicker?
It's up there. Sorry, you're up there.
No, it's okay. There we go.
Yes, yes, you, yes, you are coming. Good morning, everybody. We are thrilled to be here once again. We have made some incredible progress this year with our recognition of excellence and making that really growing from a narrow space to a much broader space over the past couple of years. And we have seen this incredible opportunity where the Board of Education, very early on with the strategic planning process, said that this is a living document and it will grow and it will change and please come back to us if you see that we need to adjust it in any way. And this year, we have seen some adjustments as to where things fit more appropriately. So Dustin, did you want to start?
Yeah, so ultimately, our first swing of that, if you guys remember, when we were first drafting this goal, we wanted to make sure that we focused on the school sites, right? So ultimately, the success of the school sites. And so you'll see, we initially drafted this goal where it was an increase for US News &amp; World Report. That also lives though inside the BHHS goal already. So that was already presented to you. That data hasn't been released yet. But that's something that Drew and his team will actually do the follow-up to. So it actually doesn't need to be in its own isolated goal. The second one is BVMS is the Schools to Watch. And so Rich's team, formerly Dr. Skon's team, they've already been working on the application for that process. It's due in October. And so their instructional leadership team has been working on submitting that to be considered for Schools to Watch, which we wouldn't then find out till the following fall. But again, that'll be something that Principal Waters will be able to present to us in his goal for the 24, '25 school year. And then for elementaries, unfortunately, which we could, be able to submit an application on all the wonderful things that we provide both at Horace Mann and at Hawthorne, soon to be Elrodale. That is dictated based off of a metric. So it's a three-pronged metrics. It has our test scores, which we are very fortunate that we score really high at the elementary levels. But it also takes some consideration our California dashboard, which that's what we're working on is our attendance and suspensions. So once we were able to work on that, which we already did from earlier presentations, both by former Principal Bugby, not yet, still Principal Bugby, Principal Caver and Ms. Collins Williams, that they have made significant strides in that area. So the award cycle of our providing, but it goes, this next year will be middle school, the following year elementary, the following year middle school. So we will know hopefully if we achieve the middle schools to watch after we submit in October. So that'll be this first chunk, what Miss Starkins is saying is we hope that in the next strategic plan, it isn't in isolation back here. It's actually within the principals' sections of that strategic plan.
Dustin, if I may on that, Horace Mann will qualify for California Exemplary Arts Education Award. So pass that on to the next team.
Yay, from Mrs. Graham and your head's team. It's excellent to add. Thank you. Program highlights, the other part was the California Board of Education Golden Dollar Awards, which we know that you have submitted on behalf of the district. So we thank you for being part of the strategic plan.
Yeah, in, in progress.
It's in progress.
This year, but we've, we've now started that, as you know. So we're, we're in progress though.
Thank you. Great.
And then staff recognition, this is something that I love to be a part of. And so thankful for everyone in this room. Jennifer Higley was our Teacher of the Year that represented us at Lakeview. The reason she was selected was for her work on STEM and coding specifically at the high school. We also won the award from the College Board for Women in STEM and Coding, based off her work on recruitment for female students. Outside of the fact that we also had our silver ranking for College Board for Access, but then also Performance. So those are two things that we don't list, but that's just excellent to remind everybody. I'm super thankful for, on behalf of myself and Dr. Horvath, for our colleagues nominating us and us achieving or winning or whatever. Miss America, no, it was the California Administrators of the Year for Personnel Services and for Education Services. In addition to Miss Starkins being named Cabinet Member of the Year by our Los Angeles, California Department of Educate, California, Los Angeles?
County Office of Education.
For Communications. And so we are excited about that and we'll continue that process of celebrating all the hard work that we all do in this room each and every year. And that concludes our strategic plan.
Can I ask just one question, please? Going back to the academic excellence point in the elementary, in terms of being eligible to be a distinguished school, I did notice that the principals highlighted their, their suspendable offenses versus how many were actually suspended. And it's not that I believe that all the kids should be suspended, you know what I mean? I'm not making any suggestions. I just want to make sure that we're balancing the goals of becoming a distinguished school and still ensuring that there are consequences.
I agree. Wholeheartedly.
And I, and I'm not suggesting that we have a behavior problem because I think that's a very reckless thing to say because we have hundreds and thousands of kids who are doing great on a daily basis. But I do know that we might have a couple, you know, I call them hotspots, you know? And so I just want to make sure that that goal is not overtaking the operation of our business, which is to ensure that the kids are feeling safe, secure, and they know that they have certain limitations. And that helps everybody to feel comfortable, you know?
Hundred percent. And ultimately, for distinguished schools, the, the, having, the majority of the percentage of overall rankings really does come from your test scores. That is where we, we, we achieve the highest, I guess, within those rankings. And it is something that we are taking into consideration. The attendance piece was the other really Achilles heel. Just because we do have a lot of families that do go on lengthier vacations and take spring break, from Thanksgiving to spring break off sometimes. I'm just kidding.
Yes.
That, that is the work that they've really done around, we wouldn't be prevented if our suspension rates were to be high due to issues. That's, that wouldn't be the case. It really is around the two-prong of is our kids engaged? They call it student engagement, meaning are they attending school? Are they engaged in school? And then are they performing when they're here? So that's really the two-prong.
Got you.
So absolutely.
Thank you. I think we're all on the same page, you know, about the balance and so, and we're here for that, you know, we're here. Let us know how we can help with that. Thank you.
Great. So I also want to extend my thank yous.
Thank you.
If you remember and you've been here a long time, this started out several years ago as really kind of a checkbox process. And so it's really evolved. And as many people in this room know, and I sincerely thank you is that instead of this just being an item on our leadership agenda, it drives our leadership agenda. And it's our, our meetings, when we're meeting with our principals, with our full leadership teams, when we meet with elementary, we meet with secondary. This has just really driven us in the right direction. And so we've really immersed ourselves in this process. And so I want to thank you all for the amount of time that this has taken. And I have spent time with each of you and I know how difficult this has been, you know, adding just, just one more thing. And so on, on that note, one thing that we've discovered is that we really want to make sure that we're really happy and supportive of the direction this is going with Danielson and the work with our evaluation tool. But it's, it's far more than just the evaluation tool. It's really about adopting and immersing this language because you could be a teacher that, or any staff member that is not evaluated every year. So we don't want to just focus on the evaluation. This is about effective teaching and learning for all of us. And so we really, at this, at our leadership conference, we had a lot of discussion about ensuring that we're using this vocabulary from Danielson in all of our meetings, in our daily practices and not just in the evaluation tool. Because this is part of our culture and to be able to use this common language in what we're doing, it makes sense. But it also gets people to understand too, that it isn't about just that one and done evaluation. It's about what happens every day in our classrooms, in our offices, in settings like this as well. So I want to share that with the board, that, that as we begin to get into the next phase, which is the revision phase of our strategic plan, is that we would like for you to consider that, that we start moving in that direction where our strategic plan actually starts to align with the same vocabulary that we're using in Danielson. So that this becomes again, part of what we do on a daily basis. And so in order to do that with fidelity, you have to then, you know, put that in our plans and you have to implement it and you have to use it on a consistent basis. And so that's how everybody gets fully engaged with the process. The other thing that I would like to bring up just for further discussion is, is that we, you know, the, the world has been a really interesting place over the last few years. And so we tended to get away from some of the work that we were working on before with DEI. And there's a lot of practices and principles and including in our own values that I feel like we need to revisit in a way when it comes to anti-Semitism, anti-hate, anti-racism. And we've kind of gone away from that as we've developed the rest of this plan. And so I would like to have some further discussion. And it's going to take some time to really build something that involves our staff, our parents, and our community. The inclusivity and the community, those are two of our values in our school district. And I want to make sure that we're able to capture that in the work that we're doing as we're moving forward. I think we're doing a great job of trying to not just add one more thing to everyone's plate, but to put it together so that people can see how it fits. And this fits nicely with some of the PBIS work that we're doing. But I do know that there is some work that we need to hit head-on when it comes to anti-racism, anti-hate, anti-Semitism. And I, I don't want that to grow in different pockets and different places. If you remember a while ago, when I first started, and many of you will remember in this room, in each school started to do their own work in this area. And it, it really got difficult because it was like, it was again, looking at silos that were working. And one school was doing something and another wasn't. And it really should be the district work. It is the community part of our, of our values. And so I would like to, at some time in the future, begin those discussions with the board and the staff about the direction that we're going to go, the support that we're going to be, that we're going to need to get there. But it's, we can't overlook some of the experiences that some of our community members are having in our own school district. And so that work is yet to happen, but we're going to need everyone to be hands on deck and to be part of this. And we can create something together, I know, that will incorporate a lot of these terms up here so that we can ensure that every student and every family feels comfortable coming to school at the HUSD. And so that is our full presentation. And I know that that has taken over three hours in total for this plan. But we're really proud of the plan and we look forward to getting some initial feedback from the board today. As I'm standing here and I'm talking to you and it's being filmed, I know that we're not in the best configuration right now for, you know, receiving some feedback. So, you know, if you want to take like two or three minutes and kind of turn tables and things like that, you know, just in a comfortable way. It doesn't have to be perfect. The room doesn't have to be perfect. But if everybody can, can kind of turn so that we can have more of a conversation with the board and start giving some initial feedback, that'd be great. And I'm going to give you two minutes to kind of stand and turn. It is beautiful, of course. Just want to make sure that we are able to have a conversation and not have. I had a little seat. And before we get started, is there a volunteer that wants to take notes? Who would like to take notes?
I'll take notes.
Thank you.
Oh, got volunteers.
Volunteers, yeah.
You can be my backup.
When I'm on it, I'll go Google Block.
Google you Doc this.
Michael.
So, yeah.
Thank you so, first of all, thank you so much. It's extraordinary, the amount of work, the amount of planning, the amount of analysis that you all have done and conveying your results and your hard work to us in very organized and thoughtful, intelligent ways is very meaningful. And it doesn't go unnoticed. And I just want to thank all of you for caring so passionately about your particular area. And that, it all comes together to make a fantastic school district. So, that is amazing. I, I guess we could just start by going around. Ms. Marcus, would you care to share some of your thoughts or feedback or?
Sure. How do we want to structure this? Do we want to just give a general overview? Do you want to go by?
That's what I was asking. Like, should you go by domain, like, you know, one, in different areas of presentation?
I could just share all of my thoughts and then?
I mean, I organized this in our shared doc as we were going, according to subject matter. So, I did safety, student services, academics, and so on. And so, I, I typed in mine under each one. So, if you want, we can go in per category and flush it out and then go to the next category if you want.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, and this is, this is the printout of it.
That's a, just as of now, because I know people may have added. But I, I think that's a good idea. I think that that's a great start. I, I also just want to remind some people at home too that this is the initial feedback. And so, this is going to be dialogue that continues, for sure. And then, you know, there's, we're going to be coming back to you anyway when we get our standardized test scores. And we'll be sharing that information. So, it's still an ongoing process. So, like, this is the initial feedback. And then, we will then be coming back to you after we hear the initial feedback. We're going to try to incorporate some of the things that I shared at the end, as far as some of the revisions, as well as some of the feedback that we have. And then, we will not be approving the new plan until August. So, we'll be in school when we start the new.
The one that's approved, yeah.
So, there's time.
Okay.
So, I, I put some questions in the, in the feedback, Dr. Brege, and I'm not going to repeat them here. Although, you know, that requires answers for you and staff to look at. So, I'm not going to put everybody on the spot with having that data instantly. I will say this. Excuse me. I think this is the third go-around we've done with the strategic plan. Third or fourth?
Third or fourth.
Third or fourth, okay. What I wonder is, we still kind of are on a plateau overall in the district. I think we've made improvements in areas, but I don't see after, usually, you want to see some significant changes after three years. And I don't think, I, the purpose of this original strategic plan that the board back then worked with you in putting it into place, I don't know if it's achieved its goal in doing that. I know it helps, what you just said, it helps you focus. It helps keep focus in your leadership. And, and for that purpose, it, it serves. That's great. I'm wondering if we, if we're getting too far away from the classroom with all of these things. So, in my head, I kind of drew this picture of a classroom, right? And that's where the strategic plan should be centered at all times. And everything else should relate to what's going on in the classroom, right? So, whether it's food services, whether it's security, whether it's technology, everything needs to relate. And I think there might be a better way to visualize and present to make sure we stay student-focused, student achievement-focused, right? Because when we're talking about, you know, are all the things that we need to do, excellence metrics and, and, you know, extra something, we just call it tilt skillet, whatever you call it, Heather? It's a tilt skillet? Tilt skillet? It does eventually trickle down to students, right? Food services trickles down to students. But I would get, I feel we get further and further away from academic achievement. And, and I really, it's, it's since day one thirteen years ago that has been my concern in this district, that there's always an overriding larger issue that keeps our attention away from the classroom, right? And, and it, it would be wonderful to see the strategic plan kind of reframed that everything we do, every dollar we spend, everything we look at is for the benefit of students and their success. And I know everything can be whittled down to do that. We could stay deferred maintenance. You know, there's, there's nothing sexy about a deferred maintenance conversation, but it's necessary. You don't want your classrooms falling apart on you. You know, that's, that's the reality of it. But when it's presented, it looks, you, you, what does this have to do with student success? You know, what does painting a building have to do with? But it does. It absolutely does. But I just think we should refocus it to that root. That's, that's what I'd like to see moving forward with this plan. So, when the community looks at it, because I do believe we publicize this plan, right? So, the community looks at it and they can see, wow, look how student-centric this district is. You know, because like I said, we have been plagued year after year with, with metric, COVID, everything. Pulling lawsuits pulls our attention away from the classroom. Pulls your attentions away from the classroom because there's, there's, everything, everything has happened. We talked about the discipline issues at certain schools this year, making the news on, on issues like that. Graduation at the high school, you know, leading up to that week. It's, it's, we don't want to make the news in these ways, right? We don't want to keep doing that. We want to make the news of, because of our achievements. We want people really to be invested in the fact that we know that students who attend this district can go to Ivy League schools, right? We proved that year after year after year. What we haven't been able to shake is this image that, that we can't, right? That this is not a place to achieve those higher education goals. And you have parents putting their kids in private schools, you know, because they think that's going to be a guaranteed path to a better higher education goals, which is all a sham anyway, but that's a different story. But I, I, we have everything in place to be that prominent district, right? We, I, I don't think we could do any more than we're doing. So, I think the strategic plan has to ask that question, right? And, and say, okay, we have everything in place for our students to succeed, for our elementary, middle, or high school students to score high. We have support systems for those that are struggling. We have, why aren't we there, right? Why aren't we there? I know the answer. I, I know the answer to that question. And the answer to the question is, nothing that we can do about it. That is outside of our domain. When you put all of the systems in place that we have and students don't achieve where they should be achieving, then you have to ask the question, where is this child's system failing, right? Because it's not in the school. So, and how much can we do about that? And we have to continue to make sure that we dotted every i, crossed every t in our classrooms, back to the classrooms. That's, so, I, I would like moving forward, because I'll shut up, I'm sorry. But I would like moving forward to see a strategic plan that represents overall success for students, focused on, you know, I know, safety is a huge deal. And I think we have that buttoned up pretty nicely in this district. I think everybody's doing an amazing job. They really are. I'm impressed. I just would really like to see our academics begin to skyrocket. That's what I think we need to see. Because, because otherwise, I think you guys are working so hard to plateau when you've got to get to the next step. And it's not even your responsibility that these students are plateauing. That's, that's what's frustrating for me.
Can I add something to that? And thank you for that point. Thank you, everybody, for a great year, really. It was a really, really amazing year. And I think that things could have gone sideways in a lot of ways. Just so much stuff sprouted up. And you guys handled everything with sophistication and grace and as a team. And I, and I really appreciate it. There's so much going on in this city that we're operating, you know? And there are so many pieces, whether you have one student or ten thousand students, you need the security. You, you need the food services. All these pieces are integral. I do agree with you. I really would love to unpack a lot of the academic stuff that happened. Because going into this year, we brought on new tools, new systems, new testing. And I really want to like deep dive into that because I heard a lot of testing fatigue, testing fatigue. And so, what does that mean for us for next year? Is it going to, are we going to do the same thing twice and expect a different result? Are we going to recalibrate the timing of what, what we do? Are we going to reduce a little or add? So, that's one of my main questions in terms of the academics. I heard the word testing fatigue a lot. And so, I just want to unpack all of that with you guys. In addition, last year, I, I really would like to know what happens following the testing. And I don't think that we've been provided that information yet. And I would love to sit in on a couple of those meetings at, at each of the school levels, if I would be welcome. For example, in, in the prior year, I understood that the principals, and I'm not calling anybody out, I'm just noticing a shift, that the principals at the elementary school were meeting on a monthly level with the grade level bands. But then, this year's report indicated that it was three times. So, once every couple of months. And I'm not necessarily at, that's what I read. Maybe I'm wrong. But I, I would like to know what that looks like and what's happening, you know, once you guys are getting the results, what's happening in the classroom and with the teachers? And I'd love to learn more about that and dive into it to figure out, okay, so now we're giving this effort, what are we doing with the information that we've got? Is our information good if the kids are too tired? I don't know. I don't know. But I, I would like to, maybe we need a study session just on that, I don't know. But I, I agree with you that things are copacetic, you know, for a lot of different big issues. And now, it's really time to dive into the academics.
Can I just?
Yes, please.
I was going to jump in for you, Sarah. It just, so, when the elementary principals presented, it was around the three times for iReady.
Got you.
They're still doing data chats weekly with their staff.
Got you. Thank you. Thank you.
So, all, all the things, they didn't bring it back up because that was kind of one of those things that they instituted last year and even the year before, really find coming. And then, like you stated, it was our first year
Yes.
instituting iReady and NWEA. And what was great over the last three days at our leadership conference was, that was one of the first conversations that we each had with each individual site as we're starting to look at the 24/25 calendar and how we're building that out. But what each of the principals alluded to was, there was follow-up post-each assessment, where we had trainers from iReady and NWEA come out and specifically walk us through what does the data mean for us? Like at the high school level, sat with the science department specifically, sat with the English department specifically, and then the math department. So, exactly that is.
Thank you.
Yeah.
But I, I do.
Furthermore.
Yeah. Coming from, you know, corporate standpoint, I do believe that having a common language is essential as a platform. And so, I hope that you'll provide us those materials so we as a board, I read the HADDY, I read all the stuff that you guys talk about because I want to be on the same page with you from A to Z. So, please provide that to us too. I know that it's onerous, but I really do believe that the strategic plan is unifying. And you guys are stronger together. And I think that that's where the synergy is going to happen, is stemming from the hard work that goes into and comes out of the strategic plan. So, I'm with you about, let's focus on the academics. But I definitely don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater. I think that, that this is a wave and we have to ride the wave and, and persist to persevere.
Oh, I, Sarah was going to say something.
Did I interrupt anyone? Sorry.
No, Dr. Brede, I'm sorry. Dr. Steenland said the same thing that I was going to say, which is, we, in response to iReady, like the way that many administrators this year were fortunate enough to be invited to an iReady conference that iReady included as part of our package. And we like met with other schools that have been using iReady for a long time. Their system of doing it is beginning of the year, middle year, the end of year. And when we spoke at our retreat, we really talked about keeping that system for the next few years to say like, we, if that is the system that's working, if that's the system that they recommend, and that that's the system that other districts are successful with, that we need to continue to give it at least three years to see where we are. And then, we're meeting with teachers before and after at beginning and middle and end. But then, on top of that, there's like weekly conversations. PLCs are weekly. And then, there's like the 10-week and the 30-week that we're also looking at data, just different data.
Thank you.
Ms. Marcus?
Well, first of all, I want to thank everybody for everything that they've done and all of the reports and putting it all together. And I agree with what my colleagues have said so far. There's no question about it. My, I'm looking at it differently. Strategic plan is basically for the students. It's what the students are going to be. And all of the things about the food services, the health, I mean, the, the business services and the facilities and all of that goes to do for the services of the students. And what is it that we want the students to do that we need to have them do is the academics. That is what we are, that's what the community looks to us for. And for years, it is, I've often wondered, Beverly Hills leads the state. Number one, the number of money, amount of money spent per student. And that is something that bothers me. If we're number one in what we spend per student, why aren't our students up there higher than they are? And we are dropping. We're not getting better. We are basically not, we're either holding still or we're not getting better. And so, it all comes down to is academics. And unfortunately, I, I don't, I, I mean, I don't have right now the figures in front of me for how the iReady and the NWEA compare with the CAS scores. I'm still waiting for that. And it'll be a while before we get it, I guess. I'm still waiting for that and it'll be a while before we get it, I guess. But one of the things that I tried to do and I had difficulty and I really wanted to meet with either one of the principals to go over those figures so I could understand them. That was one of the biggest things, is I tried to go through these figures that were here and I had questions, the percentage of what, what does that mean? How is that related? And so on. I was completely, I mean, I'm a statistics person. I like to know what things mean and how they read. And I couldn't figure it out from that where we were. So I still want a lesson in how all of those are put together. To be very honest, that meant a lot to me. As I say, we're doing great in all the areas that surround academics. But it's the academics that concern me. Because it's the parents who come to us and say, we're spending all this money, why aren't the kids in Beverly Hills schools doing better on the rankings? And I know the reason. I mean, just like Noah said, I think we are in agreement on what the problem is. But I, I hope that the plans that we've had in the past, the new NWEA and the iReady is doing something to help the CAS scores. I don't have that figure yet. I don't have that information. So that, if that's, I want to see that. And I hope that in the strategic plan, we will see that as an outcome to improve.
So Rochelle, if you and I are in agreement, and it sounds like Judy is, shouldn't we then kind of put a new target in the strategic plan about home involvement in their children's education?
Common one, I didn't hear you, Noah.
Home involvement.
Home involvement. This is the key piece that we're missing that's not discussed in the strategic plan, is engaging parents and students at home.
That's a very good point. Can we just go around, because I have a few preliminary thoughts, too. But I like that, and you're right.
All I'm saying is that I think we need to be able to justify what we're spending for the students and getting the results that we should be getting. And then that has always been a biggest concern of mine. I mean, the facilities look good, the five-year plan for construction and so on. All of that is putting together what's good for the kids. But it's the classroom, the academics, that I am very concerned about. So I guess then.
Well, we're hoping, though, that we can stick with this now that we have a system set up with, you know, new ways to collect data and how we're using data that we've never done before. It's never gone as deep. Before we pivot, that's the mistake a lot of districts make. It's just making those, it's gonna take years, though. It'll take at least three years to be able to give you that information.
Well, I would love to be able to interpret that information.
No, that part, I agree with you. Like that, we can do some lessons, study session on how to read that information, that the data portion about proficiency and I hear you.
And once the CAS, the CAS scores come out.
Then I want to see that.
It could really be, for all we know, it could be a huge jump in certain things.
I'm hoping, my goodness, I'm hoping.
The whole picture's not fully out yet about that particular metric.
But that's a great study session.
Yeah, no, it should be.
But I would love to be able to understand the metrics of the NWEA and the iReady.
And that's a deep dive in and of itself, for sure.
Yeah, we're having a presenter from the NWEA come the afternoon of September 11th. You're all welcome.
Wait, 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 what did you say?
September 11th, NWEA presenter.
Will come and walk the teachers through the data. September 11th in the afternoon, so you're all.
Please include the board member.
Yeah, you're all welcome to come to the high school if you want to sit in on that.
Thank you.
I want to say that I don't think that we can divorce the larger part outside of the classroom to what goes on in the classroom. Because first of all, we, for all we know, without all these great structures, external structures outside of the classroom, for all we know, the academic achievement could be worse. In other words, it could be that it has actually been maximized because of these various things that are in place that seem superficial, but they're really not. So like, we've gone from schooling in the 1900s where it was really just like a large classroom or a large schoolhouse where lots of different kids of different ages were there and there was one woman there with a belt, right? But school has become so much more. And when we're competing with private schools, we can't get away with not really caring about the way the school looks. You know, we can't get away with, you know, learning that our locker rooms are, you know, terribly outdated. We can no longer do that because we recognize now that with the whole child and with looking at the school experience, it's no longer just in the classroom. So I guess what I'm saying is, you're right, we want to know, we want our kids to do better academically. But for all we know, all those systems and external things have made them rise quite a bit. And had they not been in good shape, the security not been reliable, had our facilities not be improving and in some ways outstanding, for all we know, that has, that has really helped academics. And it's possible that without where we are with those, that things would be faltering. When we look at, you know, the fact that a lot of kids have experienced much more anxiety and depression since the pandemic, you know, we can no longer just say, okay, let's just stick to the classroom. The fact that we have mental wellness at the middle school and also at the high school is extraordinary and necessary in this day and age. Because again, if you go back to the early 1900s where it was just that you simply go and you learn your lessons, as they call them, you go home and you receive everything else. Unfortunately, with the collapse of a lot of families and things like that, schools have become a place where a lot more is expected. So I think that the extra systems we have, facilities, safety, outreach, PR, all those things are very important and have made our kids do a lot better than they would have had those things not been in place. I will say, though, that I think that there is a lot of PR around, you know, construction, you know. And so if you have, you're an outsider and you're someone coming, let's say you moved from Lock Niata and you're over here and you're looking and you want to see if you want to put little Johnny in the school. What might come just immediately to the forefront is how we're doing construction and different things. And like, I would love to see that there's more, I mean, just as, you know, we have some great recognition of the sports. Tim Ellis, I think he puts a little summary together, or there's a, there's communication. I'd love to see that for the visual and performing arts. Because like, you know, there are, there is a correlation between kids who are really involved in school and their extracurriculars and doing well academically. We want to attract those families. So I want someone to go on our website and see, wow, look, look at this amazing, you know, look at the scenes from some of the amazing productions that they've done. You know, it should be just as prominent as the construction and the, and the sports. Because those are the families that we want to attract because those kids are involved, those parents are involved. And, you know, I don't know who's like in charge of the website, per se, because I know that it's no longer just the website that communicates what a school's about. You have student ambassadors who are posting their own Instagram. I understand. But I really would love to see that when some outsider, let's say from Lock Niata or from another part of LA altogether, South Central LA, they come in and they want to say, hey, my kid's really, really good at performing arts. Or my kid, you know, is really interested in robotics. I would love to see that you go on and you see that. Because if you go to some of our peer districts and you look at the PR for performing arts and things like that, you'll see, it seems, I mean, you see a lot more of that. And I think that, I guess to your point, I'm saying that we want to showcase a lot of things that aren't just some of our external wild factors. Because it's incredible, Elrodeo just got, you know, incredible award. And all those things are great, but if we want to distill it down into the classroom, you know, we want to also show, you know, things that are more directly related to the kids and not just the larger things like.
Maybe, so you didn't misunderstand me?
Yeah.
I'm saying that the strategic plan as it presents should be centric about the classroom. But still, you can connect web, connect everything else in the plan to the classroom. Is what I'm saying.
You're saying make more direct correlations.
Yeah, this is, we have a strategic plan in this area because success in this area affects the classroom. Because in this, students are well-fed, it affects the performance.
Right, and it does, yeah.
Everything connects. So it's absolutely, it's not, it's not about, I just want it to be focused more on that.
You want more direct lines drawn.
Without those connections, it seems like things are operating in silence.
Or how about Noah?
And I don't want that to happen.
Maybe you're saying the strategic plan needs to connect the teachers more. Maybe that's. So we know from a management perspective that we are all now on the same page. Is it seeping in?
Students, it should always be. We learn this day one everywhere about this, it has to be about students.
Well, how is it gonna get to the students?
It's, that's the strategic plan to define that. But I mean, teachers are absolutely essential. They are the front line of that success. But it's, to me, I think that's a relationship between teacher and student and administrator and teacher. That stuff, I don't know what of that outside of the Danielson framework and looking at data really becomes part of the plan. That's, that's gonna be part of it anyway. That's a given.
We actually talked about.
Sorry, Dr. Ready, I'll finish the sentence. So to get back to what we were saying earlier, what Rochelle said, is that I think the plan needs to address home, the home, okay? Because a lot of what is hurting our district is not our district, it's happening in the home. We have to be honest about it, it's nobody's fault, whatever has happened.
Or not happening, no.
Or not happening. You did have, when you talk about a lighthouse district, you use terms like that. And like Rochelle said, we spend more money, why aren't we number one? We are not number one because the kids that are coming to our schools every day are not necessarily there to learn. They're there because their parents need to, need to by law have them in school. But, you know, parents have a place to put them during the day. And we have to shift from being a daycare to a learning institution.
But as you pointed out, we can't control that. I mean, we can have more, you know, parent outreach, but we can bring awareness to the choir.
Awareness, you bring, but this is, if you say we can't control that, that will never change.
No, but you said that, you said things beyond our control at home.
Now, because we're not really addressing it, we're not tackling it as a district. Principals may be tackling it. I know Laura's department tackles it with absenteeism and all that stuff. We're, some people are, we're getting into that in a granular level. But I think overall, we're not getting this message out to our community that if you come into Beverly Hills and you want to attend our schools, you have to be there to not only be a learner, but for the love of learning and to be a high achiever. This is what we're expecting. Because there are private schools that do that, right? And if we need to put ourselves on that level, we need to send that same message. That everybody wants us to be a private school, right? It's a public school or the private school mentality. But they're not willing to do the work to make us, to make us hit, to achieve. That's, that's what I find has been over the years, like the last 20, 30 years, has just been slowly eroding. And that is the parents' desire to have their kids be successful. Don't, I'm not just sending you to school, I'm sending you to school to succeed, to achieve, and not just, not just get through it. That's the biggest difference, right? So many schools, kids go to school, they graduate, they get through. You just get through school, bless you. I don't want to be that district. I don't want people to be that.
So we should continue to attract those types of families. And one way to do that is to continue with when there's a first glance or a first stop at the website or any type of communication we get, those type of families will be particularly interested in coming here. Of course, there's a bunch of economics at play here that's a huge problem. You know, people, you know, a lot of families can't afford a home here and they want their homes. So they have, I get that, especially young parents with school-aged children. And that's a whole other factor that is so, I mean, it's nothing we can do at this point.
Here's one thing, we did talk about at our retreat, just this, the need to kind of simplify without taking away the main focus, as you talked about, of student success and achievement, is to simplify this to where the peripheral stuff is still important and we held ourselves accountable by that. But that we talked about, just everybody should be able, like students should actually know what the goals are as well. Like, you know, trickling down to students, every student should be able to recite like what that growth goal is for themselves, you know, for the, like, parents. I mean, if you're gonna hold parents accountable, then parents need to know, they can't look at this and know what, how they're gonna be held accountable. But as far as what the goals are, this is what we do here, this is what we expect here in the district. Everybody should be able to recite like those three goals.
Can I recommend something? I took a picture, I work in Glendale, which is a lot bigger. But in very, I think in each building, there is one nice deep platform or it's like a laminated thing that does list some of the goals that are very easy to be read by parents and easy to be read by students. And I think that there's a reason for that. And that is that if everyone has sort of, the students and the teachers and everyone who goes by that can get that and have a snippet and read that.
Yeah, you should just know it.
I think that is something I would recommend, because I have seen that. And I think it could go a long way.
Can I say one thing?
Yeah.
Going along with what Mr. Margot and many of you have stated about engaging families and sharing the expectation of the school and parents partnering with us and supporting their student success. Someone coming from a high-performing private school and we introduced at the high school this year our student review meetings. And that's something that we're gonna hit harder and keep hitting. I think we had enormous dividends from that in building relationships with parents. Some parents, our assistants would have to call five or six times. We would finally get them in so we could talk about, this is what we are seeing, how can we support you because we need to do better? And we will continue. We're not going away this year. If your kid is on the DNF list again next year, we're going to be continuing. I had 11th grade this year, so I'm looking at having 12th grade next year. So I have the same families and we just keep kind of rotating it around. But we've had great success in building those relationships and building those expectations. So if you need support as a family in making academics for your child a priority, we are here to partner with you. So I'm excited about that and looking forward to continuing that next year.
Thank you.
I want to just say one thing so we can really flush through it. I have a five-year-old, a 12-year-old, and a 15-year-old, you know? And so I, I'm seeing the range. I will say that in the TK Now Kinder crowd, these families are phenomenal. Most of them have graduate degrees, you know what I mean? And I see, you know them, they're amazing. And I love being with them and I love their freshness. And they're here for everything that we have to offer them. And so I really think that what has, the corner that's been turned in the last couple of years, we have to keep doing that work. They want to be there with us. They are so excited to be part of this community. The love and respect that they have for their children's teachers is like through the roof. They adore them. I don't know what happens as your kids get a little older. Some are not as academic, some are more athletic. And the kids evolve.
Hebrews.
Yeah. The kids evolve. And I'll tell you, you know, I try not to speak about my own kids, but I have a 15-year-old who's like, Mom, come here, you're gonna get hurt. Move over here, you're, you're gonna get hit by the car. So as your children grow older, it's harder for you to tell them exactly what to do. It's a little bit of a different time. But I really, really believe that we have a community that wants to be the school district's partner. I really do. And I think that what you guys have started doing with the DNF calling home, with the absenteeism, with getting the kids in here, with the counselor advisory committee, the counselors reaching out to the families. I shared this with you that day that I came in a week or two ago. The comments that I was getting from other high school parents at the beginning of the year, oh, we don't know what we're doing, to what's now, everybody knows what they're doing. And so I agree with you that there needs to be a little bit of recalibration. But I also feel that we need to stick with it. It's working, it's not gonna happen overnight, and it's a whole culture, it's a whole mindset. But we have to keep clean, keep our side of the street clean every day of the week. And they will come to us as well. But I, I do believe that the parents and the families want to partner with the teachers and partner with the district, and that's there.
Yeah, I think, I think it's been said a lot that we have a lot of strong families and students who care about their education. And then we, and then we don't, right? And we need to shift that tide. It's, our testing results are pretty indicative. And I'm sure when the identities and stuff all align with your CAS, you will see pretty much the same thing. That band is, that band maybe shifted a little bit from August to nay. But for the most part, you know, and Dustin has heard me say this, in our district, a C should be the F, you know? That's how I feel. High achieving districts have that mentality.
Yeah, I know disagreement here.
That Cs are not good enough for our kids. Our kids should not be, oh, well, at least I passed. No, that's not, we don't say that, we don't think that. That's gotta be erased from our culture. And also to some stuff that Dr. Stern said is that it used to be that, you know, parents would raise your kids, most kids went to kindergarten knowing how to read already. And a lot of them, I think, still do, is that the case? So when they get to kindergarten, a lot of kids can read or?
Absolutely.
So, so the issue that's happened is districts have now, especially since COVID, is now we have taken over parenting, right?
Social, emotional stuff.
And you're diluting, you're diluting, you can't, there's only 24 hours in a day. There will always only be 24 hours in a day. You can't put that much emphasis on now we're diluting education by raising kids and supporting that part of it, something's gonna suffer. And that's what's happening, and I'm watching it happen. And everybody's shaking their heads because they know that it's true. So if we can get back and saying, look, parents, if you need support at home and you need whatever, we have resources for you. But let's call it what it is so we can be there to teach your kids, okay? We're gonna take them to that level, but you have to raise your kids.
I agree with what you're saying. But, but I want to make sure that it's a partnership and not you do this and we do this. We have to work together because what we saw and the data shows it, our kids are coming to school with emotional issues that, I'm just gonna call it bad for lack of a better term, that, that was, that were precluding them from being ready to learn. If I have turmoil at home, if my parents are fighting, if I'm upset because my grandma died, if I'm upset because my parents are divorcing, when I come to your classroom, that's on the forefront of my mind. So we have to recite, we have to, we have to, we have to have venues for them to be able to process those feelings, to be ready to learn. So that's where the partnership is. And the things that we did this year with Ellie Samadi and the partnership with the parents showed that. The kids who we focused on and had those issues and really delved in, we had students who were not supposed to graduate, graduate. We had students who were not coming to school, go, come to school. We had students who were failing, pass. So that's the partnership. So I think we have the foundation, now how do we grow it?
Yeah, you're right, or some child in distress. Yeah, you're right. Or some child in distress is not gonna be a good learner. Uh, that I agree with.
Mm-hmm.
And and.
But we have so many kids that we weren't aware of, honestly. It shocked me.
Right, but once again, that's that is really on parent, parents need to understand, we could be there and support your children and do all that, but just know that something's gonna give somewhere else.
You gotta meet us halfway, you gotta meet us halfway.
That's right.
The parents came in and did the therapy with us, they 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 made progress and their kids made progress.
If you're having.
I I'm not saying this of my own, you know, every site had someone that they work with and they can tell the the testimony. So it's not just me saying the process.
All I'm saying is we need to be real and communicative with our parents. If you're having trouble at home, we can put you in the right direction, help you get that taken care of. We are not the entire community psychologist.
Agreed.
That's not our job.
Agreed.
That's, you can't, we can't be expected to do that and yet.
But we are, unfortunately, there's a lot.
And 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 in doing so, we're actually enabling.
Well, I know, but we're also wearing out teachers, because teachers are given an undue burden these days. It's no longer what it was when I was teachers and they're, and they have to feel supported. So like if a kid is is literally, literally driving them crazy and and the kid is being sent away and then it's happening over and over again to the point where the kids are reading letters at at a public comment about, you know, this disrespect and the and the teacher or the substitute teacher crying. Oh, my God.
We gotta get that in here.
So that's the growth that we need is the show immunity resources, connecting the parents with the community resources.
So we, it's like you wanna say we're a partnership, our partnership is this, we're gonna be this amazing school district, we're gonna be there for you. We're gonna provide all these amazing things that you really cannot get in any other public school district in the state and possibly the country. Can you do your part and send us a student that's ready to learn?
But.
Okay?
No.
We can help you with that if you need help, but at least admit that you need help.
It's not always that easy. There are demographics, there are single moms who literally don't have the resources to get together and they want to.
I know, I know, but if we don't make that our banner, our message, we're gonna be mired in what we're doing now and it's not gonna change. And people, listen, when you have a child, you have to know that there's things that go along with that, right? And that's called raising your child.
Yeah.
Okay? And if people need assistance, ask for assistance. But we are diluting money, time, energy from our own educational staff and then we wonder why we're not achieving where we want.
But now we have the supports in place and as Mrs. Collins Williams said, we have the foundation in place. I think that the strides that we made in the last two years is, you know, you're like, you're working, 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 working and then soon you're coasting. And I think that it would be a shame to give up on all the creativity and um the resources. And I do agree with you, it's more about even from us acknowledging this is a problem and let's get in there and let's do something about it sooner than later. And I think now we're set up for that kind of acknowledgement and fast, you know, fast addressing. And sorry, I know you were trying to.
It's like triage, it's like triage when you go to the hospital.
Yes, exactly. We're a little less triage mode, I feel.
Now.
Now, yes.
Yes, and now we're able to.
And so that, and so then we can be more reflective about what's coming up. What were you gonna say? I'm sorry I interrupted you.
I'm gonna be the harsh one in the room and I'm going to, you know, I, we've been along the way for the strategic plan. Uh, we are the decision makers in the room, we are the people that have to set the pulse, the tone for the community. And what I hear all of us say is education needs to be first. I've been here seven years, you guys, and education has been fifth or sixth on your guys' priority list. And I'm gonna say that out loud, I'll be honest.
And when I came.
Noah started off with it is we had oil wells, we had COVID, we had Metro, we had all these things.
Configuration.
Correct, reconfiguration. And and this has been my first normal year as an assistant superintendent in this district, where I feel like I'm doing normal assistant superintendent things, like my colleagues in my group. That being said, we all have to make an agreement in this strategic plan and moving forward, education has to be first. Will's important, the facilities need to be important and they need to look pretty, because there's an expectation in Beverly Hills, there's very pretty homes here. However, it is back to the classroom and what Dr. Breggy was stating at our leadership conference, we all made that commitment within those discussions from business all the way across of really simplifying, not changing anything, being committed to what we've worked very hard to get here to and then allowing the system to work. Not that we're discontinuing working hard, but seeing hopefully the fruit and then being able to isolate and identify who needs those additional supports and helps. I I agree with you that, I I disagree with a lot of the statements, let me back this up, in the fact that I just sent over the weekend to a lot of people in this room, Arcadia High School, same, had COVID, we had COVID. Same demographic, meaning socio-economic level, yet 80% or more of their students are enrolled in one or more of the AP course. We're at 67%. Education first has to be that theme. 3.4, 3.45 GPA for the graduating class. Because we're in the two, twos, twos.
Nice, thank you.
You know, so attendance, their graduation rate was 99.9%. Our families still believe in, let's take the Chesapeake. So we still have a lot of fights ahead of us and we all have to continue to say, because whatever they're doing is working and they have the same shit, then, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They had the same unprecedented times, yeah.
Sorry, yes.
Yeah.
Edit, roll back tape. But we have the team, we have the team, we have the programs for each individual student. My long-winded way is we will, we will continue to fight for test scores. But what we're missing on publicizing and getting to people is the fact that there is a one size fits all for all kids here. There isn't a pathway, you'd stated to Judy, that any kid can find a passion here. And what we do is we allow the community to stand up, seven of them, and say, oh, my gosh, the third grade this year is scoring lower. Well, that's just maybe a blimp on the radar, right? We are still scoring significantly higher, but we aren't hitting the boat of every kid here can get into the college that they want to based on the fact that we've created and implemented and structured the transcript that they want to achieve. We can lead them to water. Now, how do we get to them to drink is what I believe we're getting to. But we have to maintain education first. And that's when I hope that we all can close out the school year, realizing, wow, we kinda had a normal year.
Mm-hmm, that's what I was saying.
We understand now testing, test fatigue, because we're like, shoot, we had time to implement something to monitor academic progress for the first time in this school district's history in grades nine, in 10. We've never done that. We don't have that level of data. And so now it's an awesome and exciting opportunity to spend our time during the summer and be like, what does that actually mean to us? And does it correlate with CASP? And then how's that gonna impact in 24, 25? And then how do we all have each other's backs when it feels a little bit uncomfortable for our students or our parents? When we're saying, school is first, you need to get your butt in the seat and you need to learn and you need to let us be the educational experts, because that's what we're working really hard to do. We actually do know what we're talking about and let's get to work together collaboratively and not against each other. And that's what I hope we can do.
Thank you.
I love the comparison you made to Arcadia. I think for me, that should be publicized.
Yes.
That can be publicized that we should, we should admit our own failings, so we otherwise, when we, when we sit there and we celebrate our little successes all the time and it's great that we do that, but then everybody just kinda gets comfortable. And I think this whole community, not not our, not necessarily our our staff, but our community gets comfortable with tho, with those numbers, oh, okay, we're doing okay. That's, that's not okay, just not okay. The fact that you just said these things is really important and people need to hear that. Because these are things that can be rectified by a collaborative effort, including everybody at home. And when I say, you know, obviously, when I say, I heard recently this, this idea that administrators are are hero support. That that was the term that was used, was hero support. I thought it was an interesting term, um, because everything, the heroes are in the classroom, right? That was the, that's, and and that's all I'm pushing for is just, let's get back to that's where all, everything great that happens, you guys all said it, are outside. Kosher meals, a new building, everything terrific that we can say we're doing, all the magic happens inside the classroom. We all know that, most of us have been in there in the classroom, right? So we know that's where the actual, and I've said this over and over and over again, if the magic is really happening in the classroom, nobody knows who we are, right? We are inconsequential. The most important person in a student's life should be their teacher. That's it. All of this, it's great, we love praising ourselves, we're so unimportant to this process, it's remarkable, you know? Um, it 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 should be a lot easier than it is, but like I said, we just keep it, keep a district that focuses on that, teacher and students.
So if the, if the teacher's the superhero, and I agree with you on that, then I guess what I keep going back to is when I hear about some of these egregious behaviors, I'm worried that some of these teachers, some of our great teachers, and I um I know some who have left, apparently because of this, if they aren't feeling supported, if they're not getting, if they're not feeling like consequences that are meted out to kids are being reinforced at home or by others, then that superhero is gonna find their kryptonite and disappear. So I guess it's a whole systemic.
You're talking about the handling of discipline issues.
Well, I'm saying like, if they're the superheroes, I can tell you from being an educator, I can tell you the things that eat away at great teachers.
Oh, I know that.
Okay, I know you, and I, I know we all know that, but it's, it worries me, 'cause I hear about how, you know, teachers who wanna leave or or, you know, right? Who have left and it it appears to be not because they can't teach the subject matter or because they're disappointed that the kids aren't bright enough. It's not that. If they are, it's because they feel like there's, there are um infractions of disrespect um that is almost untenable.
Well, that, but the thing is, that's.
Yeah.
Handling and addressing conduct.
Right.
Um, will help the classroom setting and the academics.
And the classroom management.
And and we need to understand what is that conduct based off of? Is it physical disabilities, emotional disabilities, academic? We we really need to, yeah, classroom management.
Classroom management, it's a lot.
It's a lot different.
I don't wanna make any assumptions about what the kids are going through. They could be going through a variety of things and all be in the same, you know, we, our hotspots, as I mentioned, but I agree with you that that's one additional way to say that academics are our priority. So we are going to immediately address this other noise.
Right, we're gonna manage this problem, so now.
Remove the barriers so that instruction can be effective.
Yes. Right, so that that class, that class session goes through quite well without, let's say, 25% of it being,
Interruptions.
You know, someone, um, you know, having to manage unruly kids. And I realize that, you know, that does go back to what's happening at home and um and those types of things. But, you know, the other issue is, and I know this is why it's difficult to deal with, um, you know, just PBIS and and positive reinforcement. It has to be kind of in concert with progressive discipline, is because there are kids, believe it or not, who do things, not because they're necessarily troubled, but it's free will. They get in a tremendous amount of attention or laughter, because it's fun.
Because it's fun, yeah.
And that, they're willing to pay the price, that um outcome and that reward is far more than what they might face in terms of consequences. I'm not saying I wanna pound, I'm not saying let's go beat those, I'm saying let's be just tired with this so that we, so that the, so that the the good or the engaged kids can flourish and the teachers who wanna give out um that quality instruction can continue with a little more ease. Now, it could just be that I'm only hearing the, you know, the horror stories and that, you know, 90% of the classes go on just fine. But I think that some of the systems that we have addressed, like the, you know, the no cellphone policy during instructional time, those type of things, that's how we can help.
Yeah.
Um, like, you know, one thing I I wonder too is, I know that a lot of classrooms have the receptacle, it's like a shoe, um, what do you guys call it? The cellphone holder.
The shoe rack, yeah.
Right, so that's great, because then when the kids come in, they put their cellphone there and then they're removed from it, it's not just in their pocket. The lure is a little less and that's going to help their engagement, that's gonna help the teachers feeling like the kids are engaged. I don't know if across the board, if every single classroom has it or should have it, I don't know.
But they can choose, we we've given them the.
Yeah, I I understand, I'm just curious.
You know, we've given them the right and.
I know some have that, yeah.
Some don't need to, you know?
Yeah.
They're in control.
But also, Dr. Stern, something that you touched on and it's something that definitely improved this year and we're continuing to grow and it will be another area of of focus in the strategic plan, is our tiered levels of intervention for behavioral support. Though, those are the different areas so that each kid can receive that intervention where they need it, so they're not disrupting the class. So that's, that's the next level.
Thank you.
We need that. And is it being documented, so like if so-and-so is disrespectful, does that get documented?
Oh, yeah.
And who, who's in charge of it? Just curious, just trying to look at the process.
So if it's in the classroom, it's, it's the teacher and it's in areas under pre-referral interventions. If it becomes to, raises to a level of discipline with the site administrator, it goes under discipline.
Okay.
A sort of discipline, excuse me.
Also, Michael, um, your last slide regarding unity and respect, remember I used to be the U?
Yep.
When we would talk about DEI, I always used to say we have to add a U to the end, you know? When we were growing up, we would hear the word tolerance a lot. To me, tolerance is very disrespectful.
It is, put it with you.
You know, I don't wanna tolerate somebody who's different from me. So I think that we're progressing from there and I'm really happy that we are, you know? Um, but I agree with you that we need to have unity and respect. And I think that's part and parcel of the behaviors. Um, and so I'm here for that. I am here to do whatever will help to rein the families in, rein the kids in, communicate our priorities and focus on the classroom. So you guys come back to us, you know, and you let us know as a board.
Yeah.
You know, this is a board that cooperates, this is a board that has peace, this is a board that wants to be your partner. Um, hopefully you can, you feel that. Um, so you come back to us and let us know what else do you need from us to help you focus on the academics and the classroom. We're, I don't speak for the rest of the board, but I think you can tell, like, this is what we're here for.
What are you gonna say?
Well, I was just gonna say, like, another big piece of the strategic plan this year was to ensure that we're we're actually capturing the same data, that that we're, we're actually coding it the right way, because otherwise it's no use at all for us to analyze that data. And it has taken a long time to do that and I would say most school districts will never get there to where we are now. We're, we're actually starting to look at the behaviors and recording them the same way. It took us a long time to get there, but but we're there. We need to keep that consistency, because now we can start to look at the data differently to see what is it? Is it disrespect? Is it a different area?
Yeah.
But I will say this, though, that that, you know, we we wanna be able to say that we wanna support teachers in some behaviors, but you, you would be surprised that some of our highest profile families that say that they want the same thing, that their kids are the problem.
Yeah, but we have to address that.
And and that's, we, and we need to be able to do that, it's, and and we will do that.
But you want support from us.
But it's, yeah, I mean, it's, it's.
I know who, I know.
Yeah, you have my support.
Mine too, because I don't want to see another great teacher who says, you know what, this is, this is demoralizing, this is fair, I, you know, the politics at play, I can't teach, I I don't wanna, I.
The families are well aware that if you're in a private school setting and you cross a certain line, that's it. You're going to be HUSD, you know what I mean? Or elsewhere. And so um we are, I I recognize.
But that's the problem.
Yes.
Right, you are the catch on.
I know.
They know you can't do anything to me.
Yes. So that's why, and I know that you're bound by Department of Education.
Where were the consequences?
Yeah.
We've been sitting here talking all this time and we've been talking about students and I've been, I don't wanna go back to my past with teaching, but I always believed in the rule, you be forewarned is to be forearmed and you will know what the consequences are. And I'm going back now to the handbook or the behavior contract and all of that, that doesn't seem to be reinforced enough. I think that that needs to have a stronger impact. You signed this contract, what did you sign? And yet they need to see it. And I think that we're, I, we're talking about behavior and so much of this, as I can recall, is that parents used to come to the school, I mean, when I went to school, if I did something wrong, the teacher was supported wholly. Now the kid comes to do something wrong and who gets the blame? The, the, the teacher.
Yes.
It's, it's, it, so it's, there's been a change. And I, 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 as an old-timer, feel that this is something that has really impacted our ability to teach. And I um, I wanna just make one little comment, I'm pretty quiet, I don't say very much, as you know. But I have to tell you, when people ask me about the school district, I say, you can get your education in our school district. We are like a private school system within a public school system. So you can send your kids here and know that they can get what they need. And I think that's what I wanna see to continue with our strategic plan. I want these kids that wanna come, that the parents, because they can, we can provide these kids at the high school with opportunities to get into top-ranked uh universities and so on. We just need to get those kids that don't apply to know that they can get there also. And unfortunately, um, financing, B1 ends today and so on, it does impact it. But our high schools, I, I'm very proud of what my high school can offer my students. But our high schools, I, I'm very proud of what my high school can offer my students. Very proud of it.
The pathways are exceptional.
The pathways are there, the, the organization, what the kids can, you only will get out of it what you put into it. I said that at graduation and that it's so important to continue to impress upon these kids that they're there for an education.
The kids talk about the pathways.
Yeah.
I always talk about my backseat, you know, in my car because I'm listening all the time. And they are, the middle schoolers are talking about, I just realized we have architecture. I didn't know that we had architecture at the middle school. I'm hearing like, what are you taking next year? What are you gonna do? So it's working on them and I hear with the high schoolers, even when I'm picking up, no, I'm the MSA, the robotics. So you're capturing them and I think this is the year to double down on all of it personally.
The problem is though, if I understand it correctly, sometimes there's these great offerings that are kind of rare, almost like a part of a private school, but there aren't enough kids to make a section, right? Like that's been happening as well, like, oh, we didn't get enough.
Critical mass.
Yeah, there's not enough critical mass to continue this particular thread or strand or.
We've been pretty good. We are unable to keep.
I haven't heard that.
We can offer all, aerospace is the one for six years has been a hit or miss.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so that's the critical mass. All other pathways, we, from an engineering standpoint, in any of them, from 46 at the middle school to 98 at the high school, we have been able to offer, implement and continue to provide with 15 or more kids in each section.
Okay.
Um, except for aerospace.
Right.
And so that's.
We just finished up the master schedule for the high school, so for sure, all the pathways are there and well represented and the kids are signing up.
Yeah, keep trying.
I understand, like the magicals used to be really hard to get in, but now they, they, they're meeting more, right? They're, they're looking for more to, to join in.
Yeah, and so performing arts is just, again, we talk about this consistently, is one of those places where it's a specific student.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, you, you also build relationships with teachers which also like to draw. So there's some students that are in MSA, not because they wanna be a future doctor, some, like, Colby, I was like wanting, usually he's in the room somewhere. But like he was in MSA all three years, but he, you know, may not go on that pathway, but he's also in K-BUS. So they, they also join programs to, based off the teachers that are leading those, um, those programs. And so that's something as well that we always have to take in consideration. And, and the facilities, I mean, we said it's exterior. Soon as Will gets my theater finished, no, just kidding, that's my ours.
Yeah, it's gonna, that's all gonna add up and it's gonna have a cumulative effect.
I think one of the things we've talked about just in our retreat, which is kind of a good segue to the end here is just that, that we, we feel like there's really good systems in place, like for the first time in a long time. So like, we don't need to keep adding because the, the more we keep adding, the further away we get. And so like, let's, let's ensure, like, and I think that any teacher, any administrator, and I've had conversations with everybody in here that can't take one more thing.
Mm-hmm.
So it's like, let's really, we've got great.
Right.
Resources in, let's, let's, you know, we have all the bells and whistles. So let's learn them. Like before we, you know, we're not going to be darting off to conferences and say, let's do this. There's a program over here, let's do, we, we have everything that we need. Let's get really good at what we have.
Agree.
I, I would just like to make a comment about the fact that before I came on, and Noah, you would be, this is in for three years now. We have really been with a really strong strategic plan. I mean, when I first came on the board.
Yeah, we didn't have.
We didn't have one even and I, I think we've come so far. And now we are at the point where, that we need to, as you just said, Dr. Brighi. We don't need to make it, embellish it anymore. Let's really focus on doing what we can do to get the kids back to being students and wanting to learn. And I think we're doing that. And with the pathways, with that, I have it and, and so on, I feel that we are trying to do all of those things, which is my concern and my focus. The buildings, the finances and all that, let them take care of that. I want my kids to get the education.
I think the feedback's been really good. I think that, that this is kind of the direction we were hoping to go. So that when we come back and share a draft plan with you, that you'll see a lot of these changes that you just shared with us. Because I think we all, all the arrows are pointing in the right direction here. We all want the same thing. We wanna focus on the same thing. But we're constantly being pulled in different, like, we, we need to just make the main thing, the main thing.
Yeah.
Okay.
And there's a couple of more, more items in here for your review.
I will share this as well with everybody.
Well, I think we added some already for you.
Yeah, and there's some questions though, I wanna make sure that.
But I do wanna see, speak with the, an administrator about those. I really wanna go into understanding those scores, et cetera.
Yeah, I, what I'd rather do, I'd like to, to bring in like and have a study session with us.
Okay.
Just, just so we can start, so we wanna meet you where you're at, you know, and it's like, you, you haven't been using the data. So it's like, let's, I'll set something up so that we can get kind of personalized lesson.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I don't know if I want based on that, but like, whatever.
No, it's not at all.
No, I agree with you because I learned a lot of it because when I was on TAC, you know, Mrs. Kaver taught me about what does this phrase mean? What does that phrase mean? So for me, it's natural at this point, but I, I don't mind having a refresher either.
But I'd like us, I'd like us to have the opportunity so that we can ask questions and that we can have, you know, without interrupting a PD. So like, we'll, I'll work on that so that we can get a, a good study session.
But if we can hold off.
Yeah, yeah.
Till the fall.
Oh, yeah.
Because I think that it would be good to get school started and then when we do our first initial assessment or diagnostic in the fall, we'll have live data to be able to discuss. I think that's gonna be very helpful of understanding. Where did our kids come out of summer? So right after our first diagnostic window in the fall would be the perfect, perfect time to do that. So then we would have actual live data for that in-the-moment discussion versus talking about stuff from the past.
Retroactive. Okay.
Yeah, and that, that, it, just to reiterate, cause that, it's not for now, like, these people sitting in front of us need a break.
Yeah.
Like in a major way. And, and for, for you to come back fresh and hit this hard with a new plan and with a new school year, I, you know, we haven't even started our summer yet and I know that and I, and I thank you for hanging in there with us. It's coming. I mean, you just need to take your break.
Don't tell me.
I can respect that and I think it's easy to see how much you guys have been doing all year. And then of course, the last couple of weeks is just a huge mountain to move.
Yeah, so thank you. I think with that, we're gonna adjourn it. Again, I'm Sandy Work and thank you so much for all of your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Back to the side.